That's how you guys want it?
Well, I certainly, when the public is here and they're saying, and this public hearing is for them, and I certainly can't tell you where the polls are going to go, sir. And I think you have the right to ask, and we have the responsibility to provide you to get those answers. And so if I could ask National Grid to meet with this gentleman and ensure that his property is preserved and not in any way, you know, just throw another poll because then I would be able to feel confident of putting him back on the agenda for a quick approval going forward.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So will you work this out with this young gentleman and ensure that we can get that information? I'm not sure whether the board will meet next week on the third, you know, because that will be, it will be back in order, but it's not necessarily what we might do. We may just think about not doing one in August early because I know in the summer we try to give the board members a little time away from us, but we'll talk about that.
Sure.
But it wouldn't put, I think, any detriment on to grid or to your properties. We get this thing straightened out in the next couple of weeks. Okay? I would entertain approvals of the National Grid poll petition for South Berry Road in Clem Court.
I'm here for South Berry Road.
Oh, you're here for South Berry Road? Okay.
I gotta figure out where the...
Okay, just let them do that. I think we have some questions on the South Berry.
Do you have the plans for South Berry Road? I'm curious where the underground ladder was to... That'd be a word, it became into my problem.
Sandy, do you want to hand him that?
Yeah.
There's no underground ladders. Yeah. It's just a single floor. I'm fine with it, makes sense now. We should oversee this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It looks like we're ready to approve the poll petition for National Grid on South Berry Road in Clem Court, having had this public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve the poll petition for South Berry Road in Clem Court.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve National Grid's petition for the South Berry Roads and Clem Court poll, I guess, presentation or positioning. Those in favor?
Aye.
Looks like it's a vote. Moving on to one that we've talked about a lot is the poll petition for Skelly Road and Old Peter Sam Road. We do have citizen, we've had citizen information and questions asked and answered, and those in favor, we would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the poll location for the public hearing for Skelly Road and Old Peter Sam Road.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the poll petition for Skelly Road and Old Peter Sam Road. Those in favor?
Aye.
Looks like a vote, and it appears that the public hearing will not offer, obviously, an approval of the petition for Old Dana Road until such time as there's been more citizen input.
So I would move to hold the petition for Old Dana Road and Sheldon Road.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to hold any approval of the petition for Old Dana Road and Sheldon Road until such time as there's more citizen input. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much for your patience and time to spend here at National Grid. I know it's difficult to show up at a public meeting and have us ask questions that seem off the wall, but I appreciate your presence here and hope that you can figure this out and look at this taken care of as soon as possible. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, I know that the chief... I know that we have a couple, very brief things that we could take care of in the agenda that's, we have the Mount Grace Land Trust Conservation Restriction Amendment on Hubbardston Road, I think 80 or 90 acres that went into the Mount Grace Land Trust probably over a year ago now. And there's something that we need to sign that we neglected to sign in the first round for...
No, no, you signed everything, the board was very supportive, and we did the conservation restriction a couple of years ago. What's happened since is a little odd. Typically, we write them, they get recorded, and we don't touch them, but in the last year or so, Congress and the IRS, they published some new language they want to see in these restrictions, which apparently in other parts of the country, they found that these conservation tools have been used fraudulently, so people get big tax breaks for something that looks like quote-unquote conservation.
And I'm kind of shocked.
Yeah, so that's obviously not the case with this project and the negatives that were protected on Hubbardston Road. So the language that's in the amendment, it doesn't functionally change what can or can't happen on the property.
Can you point that out to us, where that is?
Where the, where was planned?
Yeah, where the change in the language is that we will be...
Yeah, so the state, can I say it again?
Sure.
So the state anticipating that people want to be made in an amendment came up with a template, so that's what this four or five page piece is, but in the original conservation restriction, I can find it for you. So the two things are looking to do is make it clear that if you're changing the boundaries, it has to be done through a court of law, because apparently in some of the cases before, the language was fuzzy, so people were saying they're protecting one set of land, and then they were changing the boundaries later, which is sketchy. So they want to change that to amendment. So that would be adding a section here that describes boundary changes.
Okay.
The other piece is in section, Division Proceeds, the top of page 15. It's a slight modification, just clarifying what happens in the event that the CR is extinguished, which in Massachusetts really only happens if there's eminent domain, and the entire state legislature has to vote, and they have to agree in majority, so it's very rare. But in the case that does happen, they want to make it clear how the proceeds get divided and how Mount Grace has to then use our portion to do more conservation essentially. So there are things that are actually very close, so it's already written into this restriction, but the language is just different enough that understandably, the original donors are asking, they like the idea of Mount Grace supporting them and trying to just do the amendment. So that's really the only reason we're doing it, to preserve the integrity of the tax deduction that the Smith family took, because it's a legitimate transaction. So anything we can do to protect that or up for doing, and the current owner is also on board with that. So that's why it's actually Will Walkup who signs this, because the Smiths sold the property after they protected it.
Right, right, right. Greg, would you have a recommendation whether or not we should pursue a question with legal counsel on this before we make any...
No, I think it's perfunctory based upon the change in the federal law.
Okay.
So I think it does not require action at counsel.
Okay.
Thank you, that's a good question. I would just note, too, that the town doesn't actually hold an interest in the restriction.
Right.
You sign off in it being in the public interest.
Okay.
You're of course welcome to still go to the legal counsel if you want to.
Well, I mean, if it's, I'm not looking to spend money for legal counsel, but did wanted to know your opinion on that. How do we want to handle that, board? Do you want to take a specific vote to include the...
So if you were willing to, if I could, if you were willing to entertain a vote to approve and sign the amendment for 149 Hubbardston Road.
Okay, is there, is there a...
Yeah, it's just a signature page, and it's...
Okay, I just wondered if there's a reference that we could put in the minutes that indicate what the amendment is.
Section...
Amendment of Conservation Restriction, I guess we could call it?
There were two sections that had amendments, right?
Yeah, we have the background, and we have...
Proceeds was section five, part B.
It looks like the current owner has signed everything.
Yes, I got to meet with my three-month-old baby.
Yes, I knew they had your baby.
And what were the initial changes? The initial ones you went over? They were under section...
It basically says, "We understand being majority, the board is selected by the town of Barry, who are certified at a public meeting duly held this date. The select board voted to approve the foregoing conservation restriction from William Smith Walkup to Mount Grace Land Trust in the public interest pursuant to section 32 of chapter 184 of the Massachusetts General Laws." So I think that probably would do it.
All right. I would make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded that the board, we certified at a public meeting held tonight, that the select board voted to approve the foregoing, explained in these documents, conservation restriction from William Smith Walkup to Mount Grace Land Conservation Trust Incorporated in the public interest pursuant to section 32 of chapter 184 of the Massachusetts General Laws. This needs to be notarized.
I'm a notary if they're comfortable with me notarizing it.
I'm comfortable with you notarizing it. We have a motion made and seconded, those approving and approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, looks like it's a vote.
Oh, second.
Thought we had a second already, sorry. Okay, so can you just use her copy?
Sure.
When was this, last year?
Maybe almost two years ago.
Oh, yeah.
This is right a long time ago. Okay, and we're here on July 10, 10th, 2003. Your signature, Emily Johns. She came prepared.
Hopeful, not taking it for granted, but hopeful. And if the three of you just want to sign in the circle areas, and I can fill out the rest, I'll take a look. Thank you.
Do you want to call? Yes, please.
And I can give you a copy of the fully executed.
Oh, okay.
The state secretary was the last signature.
Okay.
So I can send that.
Okay. So we saw this right here. And you want us to put our full address and stuff on this?
The photos.
I guess. So you want me to print my name?
And I can fill out the rest, and I'll just use the town hall address.
That's fine. I'm the only one who writes, so you can read it, so not to worry.
Don't worry, I assume.
You just sign in the circle area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Get our polls straightened out, I think. Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you.
Okay, I know the chief is here, and I know we do have a ceremonial thing to do, correct?
Yes.
And so I would say if you're...
Is Ellen here? We're still waiting on Ellen to get on the way up. Do you want to speak to those officers first?
Well, I would just like to congratulate them, of course, and welcome them to their, I guess, congratulate them on their ascendance to a new position, new status in the department.
You want to wait a few minutes for Ellen to come up?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Because Ellen's like the really important one on this thing.
Yeah.
We could do the very simple thing, which is to approve the FY '24 wage authorization of a 2% cost of living for those non-union folks that are listed in the document provided for you in your packet. We have a motion, right? Do you want to give us a motion on that? Yeah, it's their new rate, correct? It's a 2% increase.
Yeah, I'd move to approve the 2% cost of living raise for the non-union staff listed here.
We have a motion made to approve the wage authorization of a 2% cost of living for those non-union employees represented on the document provided. We have a second?
Second.
Motion made, it's now seconded, those approving?
Aye.
Aye.
We have...
The other page, the second page, as the contract.
Yeah, well, those are death threats, but we don't have to...
You don't need to do anything?
No.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
That's part of their contract. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Well, chief, I will turn the, this little ceremony over to you, and we thank all of you who are here this evening, and especially, we are very proud to not only welcome people who have, you know, taken another step toward, I guess, providing the safety in the community. We're real happy about that. And I guess, chief, if you would like to introduce, and I know that the town clerk will do the honors, inappropriate.
Sure, so we have Cody Chick, who's promoted to sergeant, and Robert Brooks, who's being promoted to detective this evening. So Ellen, come up, and two officers, please.
Do you want to raise your right hands? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Cody Chick.
You should have to be, "Do hereby solemnly swear..."
Do hereby solemnly swear.
"That I will."
"That I will."
"Be true and faithful to the citizens of Barry."
"Be true and faithful to the citizens of Barry."
"Support and bear true faith and allegiance."
"Support and bear true faith and allegiance."
"To the Constitution of the United States of America."
"To the Constitution of the United States of America."
"The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts."
"The Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts."
"And to the bylaws."
"And to the bylaws."
"Rules and regulations."
"Rules and regulations."
"And other directives of the Town of Barry."
"And other directives of the Town of Barry."
"I will do so agreeably."
"I will do so agreeably."
"To the best of my knowledge and ability."
"To the best of my knowledge and ability."
"Faithfully and impartially."
"Faithfully and impartially."
"In accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts."
"In accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts."
"And I will discharge and perform..."
"And I will discharge and perform..."
"All of the duties incumbent upon me."
"All of the duties incumbent upon me."
"As State Bureau Position."
"As a sergeant of the Town of Barry, this morning."
"For which I have been duly appointed."
"For which I have been duly appointed."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Your voice.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
You guys just find others? You just find a sign that was...
Yes.
Thank you very much for taking the time to visit us for this important occasion. We're very proud of what you've accomplished and very proud of what you do each and every day.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
You have a lot of responsibility. I don't envy you on any given day, but we're awful glad you're here.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much for extending us the opportunity to have them sworn at the selectance meeting. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to have the significant others and family pin them.
Absolutely.
Good.
Next time, we're going to arrange this so you can get better pictures.
We need a bigger room.
We do. I got one in mind, though. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you to the board for allowing us to...
Our pleasure. We're going to get a better meeting room, so it looks a little better next time. What can they be next?
I think we're fine where we are right now. Hopefully, it's going to be a lot.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
While we're on personnel, I would move to approve the wage authorization for Cody Chick and for Robert Brooks.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the wage authorization for Cody Chick, now promoted to sergeant, and also the wage authorization for Robert Brooks, now promoted to detective.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Someone go tell them we approved their...
And then, can I, John, I don't know if you have something that's on the agenda, or if you are looking for a public comment, or...
Just thought I was...
You just want to, you can't wait to be here, okay.
I miss you guys so much.
Okay, I didn't know if you had something to, because we really didn't have a...
You had a vehicle, municipal vehicle.
Okay, that'll be coming up in a little bit, so...
That's what I'm here for.
Oh, okay.
Just to see what was going on with it.
Nothing for public comment? Okay.
I was told my item was on the agenda.
It could be...
26 First Street, South Berry.
Yep.
Oh, you had an M. Discharge of mortgage.
Oh, all that, okay.
Discharge of mortgage.
Yeah, discharge of mortgage, we can do that, so you don't have to sit, I know it's fun. But I know exactly what you're looking for here. Your discharge of mortgage on the Town of Barry for the Unitas property?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a typical thing. Greg, you want to explain why they do these things?
So, yeah, so what happened was, in this case, the town had issued a grant loan under the Small Cities Housing Rehabilitation Program back in 1990, excuse me, 1988, way back.
Way back.
And as part of that process, there's a mortgage that gets filed. When the property is sold or transferred, the town has an opportunity to review whether it wishes to collect the monies or not. In this instance, the gentleman has proven that the property has stayed within the family. I've had some experiences with these grant programs way back, and this is the first time I've actually seen the town actually have mortgage filed.
Yeah.
It's not typical, but I guess it probably was a rule that was back in 1988, but it's not done...
Yes, because the ones that we discharged have all been...
Off-missed, man.
All been 1988.
This era.
Something happened in 1988.
They did the sewer patch of the...
Oh, okay, that was it.
Right, and, but the money used to rehabilitate or renovate the home.
The program.
Typically, that was done in the form of a grant.
Yeah.
But this is unusual to see this.
Well, at any rate, we need a motion to discharge the mortgage as noted by the attorney in their request, and...
I'd move to approve the discharge of the mortgage for, sorry, 26 First Street.
Also known as 10 First Street.
Yes, that's right.
I had to look up and see what FKA actually meant.
Yeah.
Formerly known as.
Formerly known as. So we have a motion to discharge the mortgage, and this, as I said, this has been, you know, what we've done on many, many of these properties once they're moved around, so.
Second.
Seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll do the paperwork that's necessary.
We have it.
Okay, so we'll make sure that's filed. You're all set?
Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on.
Thank you.
One thing off the thing you don't have to do, right?
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want us to sign a blank page here, and then you can fill in the rest? Requires both, all of our signatures.
No, it's in there.
I'm pretty sure. The pink tabs?
These are all...
Home, full.
These are national grade.
Keep going.
It might be after the police thing. It's kind of a packet. Well, we don't have to wait, I mean, we can just sign it later, but... Okay, looks like we're gonna move along, and we're gonna hear about the dam now.
Sure.
Now you're on, and this is 150 years in, what, 15 minutes?
Five, maybe 10.
Maybe 10, okay.
So let me, the name is the Barry Reservoir Dam, and it's located between Williamsville Road in Barry, and it is the impoundment for the Prince River Reservoir. So included in your packet was two documents. First was the Emergency Action Plan, which was done back in 2018, and this was done by the State Commonwealth of Massachusetts Office of Dam Safety, for any dam that's considered to be hazardous, and in this case, this dam is considered to be hazardous because of its deteriorated condition. And the thing that I found most interesting was the title review, the property review summary that was attached. If you flip to the very end of that document, there's three pages, there's a report, and it kinda goes through the history of the property, and I'll go through it kinda quickly. So the dam was constructed back in the mid-1800s for, they, at that time, guessed it was part of a hydropower operation, and then it was acquired by the Prince, trustees of the Prince River Associates back in the 1930s, 1931 and 1932, during the Depression era, and it was to be utilized for recreational purposes, which had to do with the encouraging and advancing of sport fishing. So this corporation was dissolved back in 1963, and as a result of the corporation being dissolved, the title went to the trustees. There were three individuals, Mr. Howard Byram, Mr. George Dewey, and Mr. James Waittal. All of those individuals are deceased, so the title at that point becomes clouded in terms of who has ownership, and the state has tried their damnedest to research and conclude who the owners are, but they're unable to do so based upon the title document. So the owners are unknown, and at that point, the state takes jurisdiction over the dam, and they would then go ahead and begin the process of evaluating the structural integrity of the dam. So the Emergency Action Plan, to a great extent, goes through that, and I'm not gonna go through that with you, because that includes all of the scenarios that could play out if the dam were to breach. But the more important report was a Phase 2 report done back in 2020, which evaluated the structural integrity of the dam. For informational purposes, the dam is about 20 feet high, 410 feet long, and impounds about 590 acre-feet of water. It's a fairly large structure, earthen dam. It's classified by the state as a high hazard. There are three alternatives, and I had a conversation with the state. The state did contact the town back in 2019, before Jessica would have started as town administrator to engage the town in a conversation about the dam. There were three alternatives that had been put forward. All of them will be done by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so whatever direction is taken, it will not be on the town's dime, it will be on the state's responsibility as one, through one of their pilot programs. So the first would be full removal of the dam, second would be partial removal of the dam, and by partial removal, reducing the height to less than six feet high, and the impoundment less than 15 acre-feet, or to repair the dam. The cost of those steps are not insignificant. They're between 1.4 and 3.3 million dollars, all to be funded under the state's Pilot Dam Program. No money is required of the Town of Barry, and you may ask, why are we involved in this conversation? Because the state has an obligation to consult with stakeholders, which is the town, as to what their preferred alternative would be, and then, once the board states what its preferred alternative would be, the state will then develop a strategy based upon this preferred option. They will engage Mass DEP, they'll complete the necessary design plans, they'll perform wetlands and topographic survey, they'll obtain the necessary environmental permits, so because of the scope of the project, I believe it's an environmental impact report that would be required, which is a very extensive environmental review process. And then they'll finalize the documents and secure the regulatory approvals in advance of putting the project underway and actually overseeing and responsible for the construction. So what's before you today is, just to kinda little bit, go back a little bit on the history again, 'cause I kinda like it. So the dam, if you look back at the history of it, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers reviewed the site and the dam back in 1980. They found that the spillway was inadequate, and there was some seepage noted 43 years ago from the dam. They deemed that the dam was inadequate, and there were numerous deficiencies. One of the suggestions that they made was that it be removed and the pond be drained. There was little to no maintenance done on the dam site. So this dam is in the middle of the woods, it doesn't pound the Prince River, and my recommendation would be that we work with the state in pursuing the removal of the dam. And I did speak with the engineer who's kind of overseeing the Phase 2 report on the project, and she says that the preferred alternative would be what's called a partial breach. A partial breach is simpler and less costly than a full breach, but it would bring the dam down to a level, and the water down to a certain level, where it's no longer hazardous in the community. That's my five-minute presentation.
Okay.
Hope you enjoyed it.
So I think my first question, then, so the owners of this property, that company is completely defunct, what happens to that now?
There is no, the ownership is clouded, so because of the cloud and the deed, they're unable to do any type of transfer. So conceivably, the town could assert its rights under eminent domain after the dam is removed, which is required, but there is no public access to the site. There are no roads to the site, and to the best of my knowledge, there are no homes along the site. There's at least one seasonal cabin that is there, but there are no other accessibility to that particular location. So if the state, when they do the work, they will require construction easements to go across property from, as I say, Williamsville Road is where the access would be from.
Okay.
What would be the detriment if it's just left there? I mean, when, if it were, the dam were to, you know, just collapse?
Yeah.
Then what?
Inundation. So you have a potentially nine-foot-high flood that goes down the area where the Prince River is, and would potentially inundate some homes and some public property. There's a number of bridge crossings that are there that would be underwater, and there's a number of homes that are in fairly close proximity to the river. The environmental, the Emergency Action Plan report kinda highlights which properties are actually, list them out by address, and so that inundation would go all the way through Barry down to where the Prince River meets the Ware River, which is a considerable distance.
It is a considerable distance.
So I think, from my perspective, the state tries really hard to aggressively pursue owners of these dams and have the owners be responsible for maintenance and repairs, and in this case, they've done a very exhaustive job and have come up with nothing, but the fact that there's a fairly large impoundment of water which is upstream, we should do everything we possibly can, my recommendation, do everything we possibly can to make it safe and begin the process of its removal.
Yeah. I think as far as the different alternatives go, it'd be good to have some consideration of what, long-term, would be the best opportunity for future recreation if there were to be access to it in the future, you know, where we have a good amount of, you know, bicycling path, you know, off-road paths type things, to have another good location down the road. I think that's something to consider, but obviously, safety is the first priority of getting it down.
Especially if the state's gonna pay for getting...
But of those different options that, you know, that all create that safe situation, which of those might be the best?
You know, I think that, I know it's been there for X number of years anyway, but when you list what they would go through in order to remediate the problem, we're talking years before they would get this done.
Yeah, but I think it's important to take the first step.
Oh, I agree. I agree. But I'm just saying, your stuff could be quick.
It will take, it will take time. I'm guessing they may make some repairs to the spillway, because the spillway is the challenge right now, it causes the significant amount of water to be impacted. I've never been up there.
Mark, you been there?
No, I haven't. So, you know...
There was some public comment.
You been there?
Did I make a comment?
Of course.
So didn't the East Quavon Land Trust just buy up all the land pretty much around that, like, two years ago?
I don't know.
Because I went out and helped them clean it, I know I did, so part of John's thing, we're getting public access to that, there's a war, might be part of what East Quavon Land Trust might be interested in as well?
The, just to kinda, if the dam were to be repaired...
Why are you bringing it down?
If the dam were to be repaired, the town would be responsible, ongoing maintenance costs, so maintenance and engineering.
You probably wanna avoid that.
Estimated, and, you know, that's something that I would suggest is not where we wanna be. Even though it would be a newer structure, we still would have to go through the engineering report every two years and make sure that the dam is adequately maintained, and that's kind of a tough place, considering the fact this dam has been, at least back in 1980, was identified as being...
Dangerous.
...in poor condition and hazardous condition, yeah.
Well, I know that there is the Miller Beach Dam. I think that's privately owned by that...
Powder Mill is, where the Powder Mill wanted, is Ware River Power.
Yeah, Ware River Power, and then there's the one almost behind the Catholic Church in South Barry.
They're owned by the same...
Yeah, and I would just say, I don't know what they're doing with those, but those are in terrible condition.
They're responsible for any, I know the owner, and he told me that, you know, they make sure they're safe, because they are responsible for what happens if they don't. That's the scary part.
I assume that...
That's why it's not a good idea, I, you know, the town already be responsible for...
Right.
No, we're very fortunate that...
We don't want the land unless the dam is at least partially...
We're very fortunate that the state has a program that we can...
Yes.
...can utilize and that can fix this situation, certainly.
I believe, to Mark's point, the Department of Dam Safety is involved in privately owned dams as well.
Absolutely. Matter of fact, they even look at the dam up on the, is it the Barry Falls Dam?
Yes.
Which is on the jurisdiction...
Army Corps.
Right, and they, and so they look at all dams and start sort of continual bases.
Yeah, well, that one is certainly head and shoulders above what we're dealing with here, the Barry Falls Dam.
What was the measurement? Water?
590 acre-feet, the depth of the, the depth of the reservoir?
Yeah.
About 10 to 12 feet in some places. There's considerable amount of sediment that's in there.
Yeah.
And so the voters will be notified, obviously, as this project progresses, and have an opportunity to have input in it, but I don't wanna ignore the fact that this is something that should be done.
Do you need us to take any action?
Yeah, I would do.
Okay.
I would ask that the board, the board recommend that the dam be breached, and that we work with the state in terms of making sure that that's done somewhat timely manner.
So just to be clear, the three options were breach, partial breach, and replacement?
Yeah, so we have breach...
And we certainly aren't looking at replacement?
No. Replacement would be, would be a challenge.
Yeah. All right. I would move to recommend a full breach of the dam as the Select Board.
Second.
With the support of state funding?
Yes, yes, through the state Pilot Dam Program.
Okay. We have a motion made and seconded that we breach, or...
Recommend breach.
Recommend breach of the, what is called the Barry Reservoir Dam, and it would be paid for and managed by the...
State's Pilot Dam Program.
The State's Pilot Dam Program. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, Greg, for bringing...
Yeah.
For chasing that around and bringing that to our attention.
Well, I was kinda, kinda, when I, the state contacted me about the dam, I'm like, it's not us, we don't own it.
Yeah.
But then when we had additional conversations, we found out that their interest was to assist in getting rid of it, which is a huge, huge burden that lifts off the, off the town.
Well, I know that our next thing on the agenda, which I think is the reason Mr. Chase said he was here, so one thing, one thing we are doing as a Select Board is trying to go through policies and procedures and to develop some that we don't have, and to better manage some that we do have, and one of the ones that we are do, are gonna take a look at, and again, this is solely discussion, and obviously, anything that we do with municipal vehicle policy would be, okay, basically, the two folks, you're in the Commission, DPW, and you guys own all the stuff that we'll be, we'll be talking about, but do you have a copy of the policy that's currently in existence? I probably can...
I can give it.
Okay.
I can get it on my...
Yeah, I have one, I just...
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure they... Jim, do you want one?
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty contradictory stuff, it's, you know...
Thank you. For the fire chiefs and the police chiefs, they're contractual anyway, so...
I'm sorry?
Fire chiefs and the police, they have their own contract, you know, contractual anyway, so...
But the general employees underneath, yeah.
So this is a policy, I don't know how long it's been, it says here, its adopted date was 2005, so we figured we'd be taking a look at policies, and when appropriate, we'd be working with, obviously, the departments and department chairs, or whatever, who are responsible for managing the policy. So, I don't know, Greg, do you wanna walk us through this, or...
Sure. So the reason why we wanna take a look at it is we go through our insurance renewal every year on July 1st, and one of the things that we want to ensure is that the vehicles are being used for their intended purpose, which is for municipal business, and the policy says municipal vehicles may be used for legitimate municipal business, and then not to be used for transporting any individuals who are not directly or indirectly related to municipal business. Passengers shall be limited to town employees and individuals who are directly associated with the town and work for committees, consultants, et cetera. So we wanna make sure that those standards are being adhered to.
So if the chief picks me up because he says, "It's really raining and pouring out, and Maureen's walking in the Christmas parade," and he says, "You wanna get in now?"
That's a legitimate business.
That's legitimate.
That's legitimate.
I did refuse the ride, 'cause I was still gonna make it, but anyway, okay.
So the concern is, we wanna make sure that individuals are employed by the town or appointed by the town. Vehicles shouldn't be used for transport of non-town individuals. And then, one thing I didn't see in here, which has been raised in the past in other communities, some communities require that there's a municipal seal that's on the vehicle that identifies it as a municipal, that's not in the policy. So I just raised it and bring it up to you as to whether that's something you wish to have a conversation about.
I, I'd have to ask on that, isn't, I know for DOT commercial vehicles, they're required to have indication on them who they're owned by. I assume that would apply to municipalities as well, wouldn't it?
I don't know. I don't know.
That might...
Identification for, you know, town vehicle, municipal vehicle should be, you know, visible anyway, so...
Right, right, I'm just, I'm just wondering if that isn't already covered through state law, but...
I asked someone about that, and I couldn't get the right answer on this.
Okay, I mean, it certainly wouldn't hurt to include, in my opinion...
I mean, I think they are commercial, but...
Well, those bookplates have their rules on them themselves.
That's true. That could be entirely different.
And for example, I would suspect there are some, I mean, I go buy cars all the time, and I go, "Is that like a non, you know, that one of those police cars that just says nothing on it, and they're just gonna get me?" I mean, isn't that kinda common practice in the, in a police department? I don't know.
It is. It is. And I would make sure, or I would request that there be an exemption for a police department, only because-
Absolutely.
-we have detective, detective vehicle whose sole purpose is not to draw attention to the vehicle.
Right. That's true.
Um, you know, obviously, you know, my cruiser, detective's cruiser, um, you know, at some point, I hope to pass my cruiser down to the tenant. And, you know, if we have our cruiser parked in our driveway, you know, if we had a fully marked cruiser or a cruiser that was somehow marked as police, then that could, you know, draw unwanted attention to it.
True.
So, I would, I would just ask that we consider an exemption.
Well, well, obviously, as we, as we review this, what we would like is for, obviously, you and obviously, not only John, but, uh, wherever we have, you know, fire department, the DPW, where we have municipally owned vehicles, that there, that there be a policy that we all understand and, and responsibilities that we all know that we have and rules that we all follow. I mean, I guess I wouldn't expect you to take your cruiser and say, "I think I'm going to drive to California and do a cross-country."
Well, that's in my contract. I can't, I can't take that out of the Commonwealth without permission. Um, the other thing I would say is, for us, like, we run like a junior police academy. Sometimes we do have civilian ride-alongs, so, you know, there are times when we would have some-
Well, I, well, I mean, that, as long as, as long as that kind of stuff is understood as part of the, of the policy.
Yeah, I just wanted-
I think it needs to be, yeah. I, I think it'd be good to have, you know, anything of those type of exceptions explicitly written out. So, we're not just assuming, "Well, that's, you know, we make that one okay." But if, if we have it explicitly written out, I think that would be beneficial. So, let me make it work out.
Don, you have comments or anything? Or, I mean, I know I've just whipped it at you. So, obviously, we're not planning to vote a new policy this evening. We're planning to say, um, we want to make sure that this policy, as, you know, we did one a couple weeks ago that had to do with where we would have public hearings. Um, and obviously, we need to expand the, uh, places where we can hold public hearings in a, in a larger and more comfortable space than this. Uh, and we do have some ideas that we're, we're going to be working on. But at any rate, we're kind of doing policy review and reform here. And this is one that we get asked questions about when we do our po, when we do our insurance renewals. And, um, we really need to make sure that we do what we say we're going to do because I know that Monty Tech had their, you know, one of their principals take one of their vehicles, cross state lines without approval, and have an accident. And the policy was obvious. And needless to say, the man doesn't have a job anymore, at least in the school world. So, there are things that are, you know, our insurance doesn't cover-
Right.
-and is, and is problematic. Or, if we want our insurance policy to cover that, we have to have a policy that allows us to do that. So.
I think that might be the other thing as far as explicitly allowing ride-along type things is ensuring that our insurance will cover any issues that come up during that type of situation.
And it may mean we have to have a higher insurance bill if we put some of that stuff in there.
Well, that's why we have to go through this annually-
Right.
-with this, with the insurance company and make sure that we're complying with our policy.
Yeah.
Now, Greg, uh, we spoke, um, before about GPS and cameras, like GPS asset trackers, which are pretty common nowadays.
Yeah. So, I would say that if you're going to consider seals that any vehicles purchase have that, um, it's helpful to the employee and it's helpful to the town to know where the asset is.
Yeah. As of my understanding, is a, with, when you install the, want to facilitate a, a camera, there's actually a, a pretty good reduction in insurance. That's what my understanding is.
Okay. So, that would be for new vehicles purchased? We have it purchased with that? Are we, are we talking about retrofitting?
I think it might be worth, yeah, it might be worth considering the cost and the savings through insurance to do that.
Right.
I would suggest too, though, that that would be a collective bargaining issue with the, with the police community at least.
Yeah. I'm sure that that's, you know, I'm sure when they, when UPS goes on strike, that may be one of the things they're talking about. There's no question that that has become an issue for other, you know, labor groups.
So, one thing, um, we're taking, like, the sewer department, the water department, I know when they're on call on the weekends, I, I don't know what your feelings are, they, they want to take the truck home on Friday night if they have an emergency to come back to town. I don't know if that's-
Well, if they, if they live, you know, um-
If they were to stay there in the driveways-
Yeah.
-it's where they belong on, as, as the policy that was, um, adopted back in, what, May of 2005, that's pretty much what it says.
Yeah. And in the second paragraph, it does, uh, you know, say the, that positions require that employees, certain positions require employee access to municipal vehicles either during work shifts or on 24-hour on-call basis, which I think is what you're referring to there, where they'd be in an on-call type situation.
Okay.
So, they shouldn't get to go Christmas shopping or?
Oh, no.
Okay. Just checking. Well, no, I think, I think that's, that's why they put this in here. And, um-
Where vehicles are so expensive now. And as we can see, I, you know, the miles, we put unnecessary miles. Personally, if somebody going to get their own groceries or whatever, this, uh, you know, that's unacceptable.
Yeah. I, I think, just further with the 24-hour part, further down, assignment of vehicles for 25-hour, or hour use will be made in writing by the town administrator. So, we just need to make sure when someone does have it for that 24-hour, uh, use, that it comes through the proper channels. So, that everyone knows where it is, why it's there, and there's no questions about that.
Would you be bringing this before the DPW as well?
Oh, yeah. Well, certainly, we're going to sit down with the chief and, you know, have him work through this and how does this impact him?
Yep.
Obviously, we're going to have Greg, who has a lot of experience with this, looking at it. We're going to talk with our insurance company. Um, obviously, um, we'll be looking at it, but we'll hopefully all get together in a room and say, "Okay, what are we, what are we keeping in and what are we taking out?"
Yeah. For, for any proposed changes, if we don't make any changes, though, this is already in effect.
Yeah, technically.
It should be.
Well, technically, it's already-
It is already approved. Unless we're, removing it would technically be a change. That would go before everybody. Amendments, removals.
The thing of it is, if no one, if there are people who are not doing exactly what's in here, they're already violating the policy. And I would always, and I would say, "They probably don't have knowledge that there is a policy."
That's exactly true.
And so, I, I'm not saying, "Oh, let's go, 'Okay, getcha.'" No, I would say, "We have to make sure, this is 2005. That's a long time ago. That's way back."
It's way back.
That's way back. And, um, you know-
That's even before 2014.
Yes, exactly. So, I'm just saying that, um-
Yeah, I didn't, I, I had no idea this existed.
Yeah. Well, we're just going to go through things that are-
There's a lot of old policies that we need to either update or re-
Yeah.
Or potentially get rid of, honestly, with some of them.
Yeah. Some of them are just antiquated and whatever. But this is one, obviously, that we need to pay attention to. And I know that, um, you know, when you, when you look at vehicles, we should, I don't know if we have a, a policy when we have an old vehicle, what we do with it. And, because my concern is sometimes we just have them behind the ADPW department, just rotting there.
Yeah, we got to liquidate some of this stuff.
Well, I don't know if we liquidate it, but just clean it up. You know, if, if it's no longer in use and, and it should be, you know, just taken away and took, put some salvage yards, I'm like, cool with that.
Yeah. So, the, the process would be that vehicles are declared as surplus-
Exactly.
And then once there's a surplus declaration, we can sell them if they have value. If not, we can dispose of them through any available means and, and be done with them.
Yeah. So, I, you know, and that takes time and effort. And I know we got to move the tents. I know that. The tents that you guys just, you know, people just dump down in DPW. And that's another thing-
Also, I have one more thing to say about the tent on the vehicles, other than the chief's, um, you know, uh, the car-
The detective vehicle?
Undercover, whatever. Um, like, our fire chief's car is completely blacked out. And I don't feel as though that's, um, safe because I've had black tent on my vehicles. And when it's dark out, you can't see. I don't, you know, you should be ident, be able to identify actually who's driving our, our public, you know, safety vehicles, honestly.
I thought it was-
Is there a CMR that does cover, that does specifically exempt any vehicle registered to a police department? They can have the tent on?
Utilizing K-9?
Oh, that's gone. So, this is fairly recent. I want to say, maybe 2018.
Yeah, but that's not, right, how about the fire department? They can hit, I mean, what's, what's the thing with tents?
Yeah.
Is it a tent like a dark tent? Is it a secret thing or what?
If the vehicle is registered to a police department, that's all it says.
Oh, police, but it doesn't say fire.
And, and tents can certainly cause some hazards, especially with, you know, pedestrians, bicyclists that are on another side of a vehicle as you're turning a corner around a parked vehicle, things like that. There's a lot of safety concerns with, with heavy tent, but.
I can, I can definitely get you a copy of that CMR. I don't have it with me, but.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I mean, tent is fine, but beyond legal tent, you know, where it's very dark, I don't, I don't think that's, um-
Yeah. I mean, I understand.
You know what I mean?
Literal transparency.
Yeah, something. I mean, I, uh, the black Ford, I believe that's, is that factory tent on that?
Yep.
That's, that's fine, you know. The pickup truck is very dark.
Yeah.
It's black. And, and the fire chief's cars, you can't see in it. It's, um-
Yeah. I mean, I don't, no idea.
Should be removed.
Fair enough.
Yeah. It looks like under no circumstance will any person ride in the body of a truck or in the trailer or the bucket on a loader.
Those are generally show up when there was a problem.
Yeah.
Because they're, because they're pretty unusual.
Yeah.
Well, I used to do it in, in half.
I know, but we don't want this, we don't want the town to do that.
I, I worked with a Dusche guy for a while and there's some crazy things that have happened in some towns that'll cost you a finger or-
The right policies were things that I never thought I'd see when I saw. So, I had the right policies.
It's, it's good that both of you are here, at least till we can start, but, um, we're not trying to play gotcha to anybody. It's a 2005 policy. It's been around a long time. Some of it's probably very good and very appropriate. Some of it might not be. We may, we obviously can put, you know, they didn't have GPS and asset trackers of any significance in, you know, 2005. Um, we do now. Whether or not that's appropriate or not, I don't know. Um-
Questions from the public are a catalyst of this as well?
Yeah.
So, I can answer.
So, we will continue, we will continue to have conversations about that. We ask, obviously, we'll bring it up at the commission meeting. I guess it's not going to be tomorrow because-
Yeah, because I have a lot of stuff I want to bring forth.
Yeah.
And I, even though I, I said that, Tiddy.
Well, well, that's okay because I, because I'm going to be at the Cape doing conferences and so forth for the whole day tomorrow. And I was going to drive back in time for it. But I probably still will because I'd just rather get off the Cape. But, uh, anyway, so the, it works for me that it's moved. If you could get a date certain and get it to us?
The email I believe was the 19th.
Working on the 19th?
Yeah. The 19th was-
Which is next Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that'll actually happen?
I, I really, it was really my fault for tomorrow night. I, I really-
Well, Jason's out of town now with FEMA up in Vermont, so.
Oh, I, but it was, it was on, that one's on me. I, I really have stuff I want to bring forth. And I, I, I have work to do.
My only concern, um, and I, I think we'll get more to this with the road paving list, is that the 17th is the deadline for, um, for Chapter 90 reimbursement.
We do have a Chapter 90 issue. Do, Greg, is that then resolved?
Not to my knowledge.
Not as of Friday.
Okay. That's a critical.
It is very critical or we're going to have no free cash next year.
Okay.
If we don't have it fully resolved by the 17th when their books close.
And if it's not done by the 17th, there, we're not looking to get the reimbursement till 24.
Right.
We know. Yeah.
Sometime.
That's what happened last year.
Now, does Jason have the material he needs to do to follow up on that?
That's, that's the question. Do we have the load slips? Do we have the, the missing information?
He had everything all set and done.
What was submitted was woefully inadequate.
Yeah. Department of Transportation sent it back.
It was, it was completely rejected and we might potentially, depending on their choices, be on the hook for $143,000 overage outside of Chapter 90.
So, at, at any rate, what we need to do is to, now, we sent all of that to him, I think. Didn't we? We sent him that letter?
I, I, I've not been included in any of that communication whatsoever. I haven't seen any-
I, I called the state aid, or the district aid office and spoke with them on the phone to get a better understanding of the situation. So, I don't have any email on that to forward, but-
I think I do.
There was one email that was sent to me from, that was, that initially told us all that there was a problem.
Yes.
Yes. I believe that was included.
And that's the only one I've seen.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if that went to Jason.
I think it went to Jason before it got to us, but I can double check that.
Oh, thank you.
Are we also with the municipal?
Yes, thank you. And thank you very much, Chief, for getting, making that all happen.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Thank you.
But we-
Have a good night.
Yeah. I, I wasn't sure to bring, I intended to bring this up for, um, select board reports, having had that phone call, but I think this, you know, especially with the road paving list is something to-
Yeah. Um, do, I don't have, I don't think I still, do you remember who the sender was?
Uh, it was originally from Chris, uh, let me see. Chris Bouchard.
Bouchard. B.
Bouchar. Bouchard.
B-R-U.
B-O-U-C-H-A-R-D.
P. B-R-U.
The state aid administrator for District 2. Yeah, the original email was to Jason and then-
So, Jason has that email?
Yep. And then other people within the town were copied on it.
17th, you said?
Yeah. I don't think that date is listed in this email, though. Actually, let me check. That, that's what I got from the phone call with them.
Are you out there tomorrow?
We need HMA load tickets, tack load tickets, asphalt adjustment worksheets, diesel fuel adjustments. And then even with that, we need to hope that the district engineer decides to give us a pass and let us off the hook for-
Because it was over 20% and not-
It's 26% over.
26.8.
Yeah. Which we didn't get approval to go over with.
Can you say it, please?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah. Okay. Um-
Did the flyer him, it messaged him or?
Good, good.
There was also some, um, reimbursement requests that do not even apply to the Chapter 90.
Oh, yeah. He mentioned there was a roller. Um, I don't know anything about that yet, though.
Oh, the, um, sewer or water extension, uh, plan?
Oh, yes. Yeah. There, there was some sewer and water items that were included in the Chapter 90 reimbursement, and that's not allowed. So.
Okay. So, that's, that's, we got to get on that before next week for sure.
Yes.
Like tomorrow.
Or we're out of luck with our-
Yeah.
-free cash again.
And we can't be out of luck again on free cash.
So, they, uh, he said their books close on the 17th.
Now, he was, uh, Chris Bouchard was going to have a conversation with his superiors on that. And what was that, when, when was that supposed to transfire? Did he mention to you?
Oh, as far as the, um, the overage?
Yes.
Uh, no, he didn't say when that was going to happen. Um, I don't know that us having things in by this deadline impacts that or not. Um, certainly, we, we hope, uh, that comes out.
Well, there was a problem with the numbers as well. Um, the reclamation versus the overage on the tonnage on the asphalt.
Right.
Which, uh, the numbers didn't add up and you had a problem with that.
Well, that, that's something that I think would be cleared up once the load tickets Well, that, that's something that I think would be cleared up once the load tickets are provided. That should.
Well, no, actually.
The asphalt load tickets should.
The number of, the, the amount of tons of asphalt versus the ten thousand yards, but ten thousand yards, you, what? Um, ten thousand yards overage on the reclamation, there should be a certain amount of asphalt that's going to cover that. And three hundred, it was only three hundred ton over, and that doesn't cover it as well. So, I don't know if you explained that to you or not.
Uh, we got a little bit into that. I think ultimately what that is, is not so much a chapter ninety issue as a making sure we're doing best practices for the well-being of our roads going down in the future.
Yeah.
Um, there was, did he also explain to you those clear work sheets as well?
That were supposed to be submitted for the, the.
Makes the bid summary very easy.
Yep.
Okay, so basically, uh, just in kind of condensing this, that the stuff that was, that the town submitted for chapter ninety reimbursement was incomplete.
Yes, it was rejected by MassDOT.
And, and rejected and needs to be resubmitted correctly before the seventeenth of July. Your job.
I'll reach out to him.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's try to get it done. If there's anything we can do on our end to help him, um, let's get it done if we can before the end of the week. Cause the seventeenth is going to be here very quickly, like Monday.
Okay, I'll reach out to him and then, uh.
Yeah. Well, if he has the stuff, it shouldn't be long to.
Right, right. It should be, as long as everything's, you know, there, it just needs to be put together, sent back. And then we just hope for the best with the overage and that's, that's not anything we can do at this point.
No.
That is, you know, but, you know, I'm sure getting this stuff in, I don't, I, I assume that doesn't technically have any impact, but maybe it will look more favorably.
Looks more favorably if we get our stuff done, yeah. Okay, well, you'll take care of having a conversation with him?
I will.
He did tell me if I needed anything to text him. And we, that was when we were talking about poll petitions. So you can text.
Won't you worry? Probably will be texting when I get my truck.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Can I, can I keep this? This policy one, whether.
Oh, sure.
The goals.
Oh, absolutely. Well, we're not going to make a secret of it.
Yeah, I mean, that's another, one of the issues that we have is that we need to make sure that these policies are widely available. And I think that's going to come down to, you know, potentially updating the website and online resources to have that readily available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, big dam is done, policy discussion. Uh, next steps for that, anybody? Uh, how, shall we, uh, have that on the agenda for DPW and maybe have another opportunity to talk with the chief? And probably the fire dip chief unfortunately is still deployed. Love to have his input. He can usually, James can send him stuff and he does respond, so maybe.
I can send him stuff too.
Okay, so maybe we'll, I, I just don't want.
He responds to me.
I just don't want to have people feel left out that they weren't, you know, part of our conversation when we made adjustments in the policy that impacts them. Okay, moving along. Uh, let's look at this one. Film production policy.
That's me.
How exciting.
So, um, occasionally in the time I've been here, I've been contacted by one person who wants to do a, a film production in town. Happens to be a resident, happens to be a single person. But it kind of got me thinking that, um, in some communities, there are film productions that take place. So when I did some research, um, in terms of what policies may exist and put something together, I think it's pretty simple. It provides that there would be a daily fee, uh, provided to the town of a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. But more importantly, it ensures that the police, fire, DPW, uh, and other departments estimate what their costs will be. And that those costs are included in any approval that's done upfront. I like to do these things in advance because if you wait until someone comes in, then they claim that they're not subject to the policy. So my thought is do it now. If it's never needed, then it will collect dust. But if somebody down the road, there is a production that wants to come in town and do a, a major shoot, uh, we have a way of recovering our costs.
Um, I, I just say this, and I'm not recommending this, I'm just saying that should there be, as we take a look at policies and make adjustments, should there be a process whereby for the school, like the school committee does? Where they have a policy, they put it on the table for thirty-day public comment. They just let you know, okay? And if some people, and obviously in an emergency situation, it would be different. But that gives anybody who may have a question or comment, they can send you something and say, gee, can I, I don't, can I go to the school committee meeting? Can I show up? Now, this one I wouldn't think would be a big draw. However, if we, if we created a policy about how we are going to review policies, it may be important.
Policy, policy?
Well, yeah.
That's a, that's a good suggestion.
And I can just, you know, I can lift what the, what the school committee does, and I think it's a, some sort of a statute for them. And, uh, you lay it on the table, and if no one's, you know, has a comment or whatever to change it, then it comes off and the, and you can vote it as is or with changes.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great op, great to, to give an opportunity for it to be, uh, you know, looked at here, left out for public comment, you know, put on the website, you know, communicated that there is a new policy. I, I think that's absolutely great to get not just, um, departments, but also the public involved. Give everyone an opportunity to, um, you know, read, understand and give input.
I can, I'll, I'll put a policy together that you, a policy about policies together for you. And you can, um, you can decide exactly what we want to do with that. But I, I think the film permit makes sense. And, um, I, I can't imagine we will be overrun with the people who would like to do that. But we did have one of those Hallmark movies. You know, those things, the Schmaltzy thing is around Christmas time?
Yeah, I've seen it.
They actually did it at the Harding Allen Estate.
There you go.
It was like a, you know, um, thing.
When was this?
Was it ten or fifteen years ago?
Was that long ago?
Oh, it was quite a while ago, yeah.
I'm sure my wife has seen it.
Yeah, well, probably. It was some sort of a mystery thing at that, at the Harding Allen Estate. It was, it was pretty hokey, but anyway, it did happen. It did happen very, just that way, you know? And, and I would say that, you know, there's, there's some stuff, like even on the Barry Dam, that I would say, I would make the historical society aware. They are people who have insight in about who owned what and when and all. Can you see Lucy Allen? She'll be all over this. And I just think that we should make them aware that, hey, they're going to fix this and it's really great. And, um, we may get some information from them, that they, hey, you know who used to own it? They don't anymore. Not that we want to own it, but.
No.
Um, they'll, they'll know all about this, I'm guessing. And if they don't, we probably have some good information we could give them about it.
I think, I think the, the name reservoir implied that there was municipal ownership, but it's not a public drinking source.
Well, now, there's a, there's the, what they call Mark. Now, Mark and I are going to date ourselves with this. There's the reservoir which is located on Pleasant Street, okay? But then there's the old reservoir. Now, that's not this one.
That's what.
Yeah, this is old reservoir, saying it. Yes, it is.
This is old reservoir.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I've known as.
Do you know?
Well, I know where it's located, but I was thinking it was more off High Hill Road, that way.
Well, it is. It's, it's, um, if you go out, uh, you know, you go out Williamsville Road and this one, Flaherty Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, go down that way?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it goes into that, yeah, okay.
It's a big, it's a big piece of land in there.
It's a big piece of land. I'm shocked nobody owns that.
Well, um, the, the site, Meditation owns some of that one.
They own the, uh, west, westernly shore.
Okay, okay. Well, they own everything that they can buy up there.
But they, but they don't own the reservoir.
Yeah.
I'm sure they don't.
They were smart enough to steer clear of the dam. Goes right around that.
Yeah, I, I think when I looked at it on MassGIS two, there was like one small parcel just around the dam as well that was unclear who owned it through the MassGIS system.
Okay, okay.
You can own everything around it, you just don't own that.
Didn't they used to, um, breach the dam and let water run into the, that we, what we call the reservoir?
I don't know.
I don't even get by.
So there's a, there's a pipe in the dam.
Yeah.
But it no longer, it looks like a manual flywheel.
Yeah, that nobody could open now.
Uh, it was kind of interesting because when I saw it, I saw the plans from either the nineteen thirties or nineteen forties. And the drawings were done by Rodney Hunt Company.
Oh, yeah.
For those of us who know from this area, they were a huge company involved in water gates and things like that.
And what was that drawing, the date on that?
Um, nineteen thirties or nineteen forties.
Was that far back?
Yeah.
Well, before, before even my time.
Yeah.
It's pretty amazing when you see, look back at it.
Okay, so do we want to take action on the film, uh, permit policy? I just don't think it impacts our, our locals too much.
There's no reason to do, to take any action on it today.
Okay.
We'll, uh, we'll, we'll discuss it at a future meeting after it's had a chance to mature.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, um, I do not have access to, uh, from the DPW, a, a formal road paving list. Uh, Greg, do you have?
No.
Formal road paving?
I, I was also going to say, I don't know that we should approve any road paving at this point until chapter ninety's worked out.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't have the list, so we will.
As much as.
There's really no appointment.
I mean, unfortunately, like as, as much as it would be good to get more road paved, we need to know where we stand financially and have more details, uh, figured out. I think that's kind of a, a part of that discussion.
Take no action? We'll take no action.
Take no action, unfortunately.
We have two special events applications.
Performance evaluations.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just discussion.
Okay, well, again, I, Greg and I have had conversations about the fact that there hasn't been a really, um, shall we say, specific and organized performance evaluation process in the community for a very long time.
Was there ever?
I'm guessing there was sometimes.
There was.
Okay, uh, I know that since my joining the board, there's been no particular formal process for evaluation. Um, I think the commission, the DPW commission may have done some evaluations. They weren't necessarily formal to my knowledge. Um, but I don't, I know that we did some evaluations on the former chief. But I have not on the new chief. So, we don't really have a process that we all have, you know, sat down and spent time with department heads and say, you know, goal setting, or, you know, we really haven't done that. So I talked with Greg about the fact that what's really important as our first step is to make sure we put together a process.
Yep.
That's not only transparent, but that people understand and that we can use this year to say, here's, here's the process. Here's what you'll be held accountable for, for, okay, this time next year.
I think that would be a great procedural policy to have in place.
Okay, so I, I'll be happy to, to work with you, Greg, on that.
Yep.
And to get that started. And obviously, that, this will take meetings with, you know, individuals that will be part of the, you know, impacted by the process.
Yeah.
And it also means, um, that if we have a new town administrator soon, or not so soon, that, uh, obviously that person would have an obligation to, you know, obviously to, to do some of those evaluations. I don't know if some of those would be left directly to the board, whether for, for the chief, you know, the chief of police, the chief.
Well, I assume for the town administrator.
Yeah, of, yeah, for the town administrator.
They would be.
The board would be a secondary reviewer. So you have to sign off on your direct appointments.
Okay.
And add any comments that you see fit.
Okay, so we have to have that as part of the process. But at any rate, um, we did feel that that was something that's sort of lacking in our, in our work. Okay, um, road paving list, we're just going to stop. We're now, we're down, we're down to special events. The Savage Race Boston that has happened in our, I think, three times maybe now. Um, that all the paperwork has been filed as, as necessary and appropriate. And obviously, we, we need to approve that special event, which is upcoming, I think, very quickly. It's July twenty-second. We have a motion?
I would move to approve the Savage Race Boston event for seven twenty-two of this year, for, uh, July twenty-second.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the Savage Race Boston event, um, submitted by the, um, Stone Cow Brewery on July twenty-second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second special events application for the New England Spartan Race on August twelfth and thirteen, again submitted by the same, um, agency, um, Stone Cow Brewery. That has been in our community now for probably, gosh, over five years, I would say.
Yeah.
Uh, all the paperwork has been approved, uh, or shall I say, all of the paperwork has been submitted properly and, um, we are ready to approve if that is the board's wish.
I would move to approve the New England Spartan Race Weekend for, uh, August twelfth through thirteenth.
We have a second?
Yes, second.
The motion made and seconded to approve the New England Spartan Race on the dates of August twelfth and thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we've taken, we've taken care of the Mount Graceland Trust Conservation Restriction Amendment, which is a necessary, uh, shall we say, piece of a conservation land trust. Uh, I think after the board took some two years ago on land up on six, Route sixty-two. So that has been taken care of. It's, it's, it's something that was required by statute. Um, discharge of mortgage, we've taken care of that for the Unites property. We've taken care of personnel, authorizations for the swearing in of sergeant and detective. Um, and also the contractual obligation for F twenty-four for the COLA for those non-union personnel. And ready for public comment, seeing no public, uh, in our presence at this point, we can move along to the approval of meeting minutes. Um, which is the amended June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three amended annual town meeting minutes that have been provided for your review.
I would move to approve the amended June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes.
With a motion made, a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the annual town meeting minute, amended minutes. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have a mo, uh, minutes for June twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
I'd move the approval of the meeting minutes from June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, um, selectmen minutes. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have a great opportunity to hear our town administrator report.
Aye, I'll be, I'll be quick. So, uh, we will need a special meeting before the end of the month to approve the FY two thousand and twenty-three interdepartmental budget transfers. I don't have an exact.
So, so would you, all right, um, they're, they want the, uh, June seventeenth should have been the third, um, Mondays, that should have been our meeting. But it looks like the commission is going to want that meeting.
No, 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 they're looking at the nineteenth, so that's a Wednesday.
Okay, so, so we're good to go. I think we can do June seventeenth?
I won't be here.
July seventeenth?
I won't be here.
Okay. Okay.
But I'll be here the eighteenth and the nineteenth.
Okay, I'm, I'm flexible to do the eighteenth?
Yeah, I can do the eighteenth.
Okay. Uh, we'll set our next, um, regular meeting for July, do the eighteenth of July. Where we can take care of that final business.
It should be very quick, so.
Well, if there's some odds and ends, because what I'd like to do, obviously, is not have two meetings in August if we could, just because I know that in the past. Yeah, I mean, she'll be out on, on, on medical leave, so. So, that would leave us with, um, let's look at the calendar there. August. So, the first meeting in August would be, if we don't, if we have it, on the seventh and the twenty-first. So which one of those don't we want to have? The seventh?
I've had the surgery on the fourth.
You have, yeah, so it would be good for, for us not to have one on the seventh?
Aye.
That would leave us with a meeting on the twenty-first.
I thi, I think that would work out well because if you look at the timing on the town administrator recruitment, the applications are due in on the seventh of August.
And we'll have time to.
And they'll give the consultant opportunity to go through and rate them and rank them, so we may have some substantive information for your meeting on the twenty-first.
So, so we will have a meeting on the seventeenth of, on the eighteenth of July. And then we will not have another regularly scheduled meeting until okay, first, until the twenty-first of.
Till the twenty-first of August.
Now, of course, this does not prohibit a problem or an issue of concern that we have to address, what we wouldn't call a meeting. But, uh, due to the medical leave of our administrative assistant and so forth, did that work for everyone?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put that morning on the twenty-first, but that should.
Well, I, I, what I really try to do is, and usually we only have one meeting in, in, in July. Uh, obviously, we're good, we've had more than that and have another one coming up, so. So we're good? We got that down? We know where we're supposed to be? Uh, obviously, I will be in mediation on the twenty-first. I do not see, uh, any, any hope that we will have the police issue resolved. Thus, because we'll be looking for a special town meeting, I'm hoping, early fall. However, I'm not going to tell you that that's really going to happen. The two, the two major issues we have are obviously those contracts. It doesn't change the budget, it doesn't do anything like that. It just means it's, uh, it's something that the town clerk has to worry about. And I know that we're going to have, you know, the election, aren't we? She's going to have elections, our primaries.
September, yeah, September there'll be primaries, and then November, a special election.
Yeah, so hopefully, we'll be able to do, um, a, cause that's, you know, that's busy times for her, and then to have a special town meeting is just one more thing. I mean, we may end up in, you know, after November, doing that final thing on, on, on the contracts. Hopefully, we do that.
I'm, I'm curious, one last thing under my report. So we've been, uh, watching the tree situation.
Yes.
Down on Worcester Road between Fruitland Road and, um, Wildwood Drive. Good news is, the state has indicated that, uh, those trees will be removed forthwith.
Oh, good.
Uh, National Grid was responsible due to the proximity of the electrical wires, so they'll be, they'll be taken out. I don't have a date. Uh, and there were two trees that, um, they determined are still alive because they're leafing out after being defoliated by insects or caterpillars, but um, there were some down there that are clearly dead.
Oh, clearly.
And those are the ones that are of the greatest concern.
And there's, and there's others as you go up West Street even that are still.
They have.
The Elms took it. They're in tough shape.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Greg. Um, Greg, um, could I ask you to also follow up with the DPW of, uh, with, with Jason? Just, just to make certain that he is very aware of exactly what he's responsible for, because I'm, I'm assuming that he, if he knows this information, he's working on it, but if not.
I would agree.
I mean, uh, I don't know if there is, uh, you know, if there's additional help and assistance he needs to make this happen, if that's. If that's the case, I think we're very amenable to, to trying to provide that assistance.
And the, the state, uh, sorry, the district's aid adminis, state aid administrator for the district was very clear that they're happy to help in any way to, to get things together. They're available, you know, as needed.
Because we can't just let it drop.
Right.
No, that would be, that would be.
Bad thing to do. We've been there before.
Yep, that'd be absolutely. Well, this one we've had warning of.
The chapter ninety money doesn't have to be, you know, you, you don't have to do it way to the end of the, the whole thing to, to get it all. He could do, you know, separate projects, you know what I mean?
Yes.
He doesn't, it just doesn't have to go this far, you know?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Most communities, when the project is done, the paperwork gets submitted.
Exactly.
Select board reports. Does anybody have?
Yeah, so obviously, the biggest part of my select board report was the conversation I had with the district state aid director as far as our chapter ninety being over on certain projects and being rejected. But I also was able to discuss with him further, different funding options that we might have for other projects in town. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to kind of find some direction for, you know, getting other transportation improvements around town aside from chapter ninety and potentially a tip project, but also looking into safe routes to school, Mass Trails grants, and other things along those lines. So I think there's a lot of options there, he, so, and they're, they're certainly ready and willing to help us try to pursue any of those, so. I think those could be some great opportunities.
Safe route to Quavo National High School is, Stetson School is just, I mean, it's criminal. And that's been years that we've talked about sidewalks there, and I know they're just very expensive, but there's so many kids, I mean.
And that's potentially a project that could be done as a tip project as well.
That would be great.
Where it is eligible for state funding there.
You know, and I, I know that there's a lot of people who say, gee, I'd love to just walk down and get my mail. It's not that far to send it home. But it's dangerous. It's dangerous. And in the winter, it's really dangerous. Anyway, so it's, anything else, John?
Nope, let's.
So I, Mark?
Um, no, basically, I was gonna talk to John and talk about that. I had spoken to Chris Bouchette as well, and that was one thing I was gonna talk about.
I, yeah.
He stole the thunder.
I, I felt bad for Chris. He's like, oh, I already explained this to someone else on your board earlier. And I was like, oh, well.
It's, it's.
If you don't mind explaining it again, I can't really talk with him.
If you picked up on something I did, or maybe vice versa, it's all good. I'm glad.
It's all good that we get done.
Actually, um, he's, did you, I hadn't put my email on the list, so he will, going forward in chapter ninety, I'll get the emails as well.
I, I should ask him to add me to that as well. But I'd name one on the board, should, should probably give him the email addresses for it to include.
Right. Anything else, Mark?
No.
Okay, I, I would just like to let you know that I'm gonna, gonna work with the tech guy.
Oh, okay.
I'm still waiting to get an opportunity to get him here with me to walk places and say, what do you think? Can we do this? Can we do that? In order to get some new rooms eligible for meetings that can be carefully and accurately, okay.
Percorded.
I do have one more.
He wanted to call in, so I sent him pictures that I took.
Okay.
So he might wanna start with that.
Sure, sure.
But I was waiting to find out when you were available to have him.
Well, I'm usually available late morning into the afternoon. On most mornings, I work. Tomorrow, tomorrow, I'm, I'm working all day, so I'm not available tomorrow, but.
You pick the day and time, and I'll tell him to be ready for it, so.
Let's say.
You can just.
Yeah, I'll call you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a crazy week this week. Okay, so I, just because I will continue to work on that recording thing, that does not seem like that is insurmountable. In fact, it seems to me, with a little push and shove, we can get that, that, that stuff done in, in spaces that will be, I think we're gonna have to consider the scene, you said there's one of those spaces.
I think that's an appropriate space.
I'm not thrilled with the acoustics there, but, you know, it is what it is. I would say this is the worst room we'll end up with.
Yeah.
I'm serious.
There's, there's ways to adjust acoustics too that aren't, you know, crazy expensive. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so any correspondence that we have, well, other than the one from the state relative to chapter ninety? Old business, anything? Hearing none. Let's look to motion to adjourn.
I'd move to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you all. Good meeting. And we will begin our, I'll get that policy, the policy, develop policy, you know, thing.
Yep.
Because that clarifies some stuff.
I can also throw together a quick draft of AI. I was playing around with that this morning.